Uh, I think Mike.
Oh.
It was good time.
Oh, it's a curse.
One and we didn't hear it.
They're killing Congress.
Doc over to uh, again there.
I think I like that.
Alright, everybody stand for the plate.
Alrighty, we will get our meeting for the Platte County Council Meeting for three fourteen twenty-two underway. First up is Deborah Mix.
Good evening.
Um, I'm here today. My name is Debbie and I work for Purdue Extension. Um, my role is Community Wellness Coordinator, but I'm not an executive leader. And um, introduce myself. Um, one of the, I was approached by somebody from, actually from Francis North. They have a situation there where they play at the baseball field and be dangerous situation them crossing. Um, wherever, um, on both sides of the street. Kids are going in between, um, cars and stuff and across the road. Where's Bill's county? County. Uh, this is, it's a really, really wide, uh, seven wide. Which is, it comfortably handles two semis going across with room. And so, um, they were had asked me if there was something we could do to calm that down, get the kids across the street more safely. And so, um, and I also had a grant that I was looking at. So, that grant deadline has come and gone at the same time. But it's really for temporary traffic coming situations. So it's not to pay for the whole thing, to try out different things to see what works. Um, so, what we had had a small meeting with two people in Francisville and what we come up with is that perhaps a crosswalk or two would work best. Um, because it's not expensive and, um, it, if it works, everybody walking across the same place rather than into cars. So, in order, that's not a really expensive project, but still need to test it out to see if it's followed across the wall. Once people get a habit, break that. So, I would, I am trying to, I have a couple, I have access to a couple different kinds of grants. And so, I am trying to see if I can get the county along with Francisville Town Board, um, or the county highway department. And Gary from the Bureau. I'd really like to get those guys that are on that road, the semis are going. So I, I just want, I wouldn't want that to matter. So I was hoping that I could present the ideas to you. I, um, see if someone from the board would like to attend a joint meeting. Uh, so we can kind of talk about it a little bit and see what, what steps, if any, we can take to, um, make some changes. And, um, I give you the packet and crosswalks are, um, but, um, there are other ways to handle it as well. And if we wait and really plan this, a lot of, on a permanent basis, um, he might be able to apply for that, that grant that I just talked about in the first place and get that temporary. You know, it's, some of the equipment they're willing to let us use would be something that we can, uh, capable of. And yeah, some of the ideas with flashing lights, movable flashing lights, possibly attractive. And also crossing walks, but there's, even if it's temporary, something by the road and make it a little bit less narrow. Um, the width of a road invites, um, you're more likely to drive slower than you are at road. Boom, so, so in this packet. Kids and parents and everyone in the community to be a part of making that crosswalk, then they're more likely to use it. So, this is something that just, last year in Johnson, it's a sidewalk, a crosswalk. But it's, it's the same idea of getting, um, how kids can get involved and how a complex design actually. So, as you go, the beginning is getting stages as they move forward, then the last. So, um, with that in mind, I just wanted to present that idea and if, I would like to have this meeting take place early. I would really like it to be for the joint commission council meeting. So we can kind of, anybody can be on the same page and see what that should come out to. So, um. Pretty much, that's what I'm presenting and that may work together and make something like that help. To work because it will take both the county and the town as far as, um, because of the way the road is owned. Do you have a commissioner coming? Uh, yes. Talking about, um. That one? Is going to be attended as, as well as Gary from the Highway Department. And, um, don't. How many from the Francisville? First thing, I approached them first and they had said, well, we don't want to do anything without county being certified and. Or they're on. That makes sense.
I have a little thought maybe trying to outside box here on this. Um, I know that department has a fair amount of favorage. And I wonder how, if it would be feasible, just to, if it would be feasible, the county has, the county garage has an astronomical amount of these grindings that they have taken from the, uh, county, the state. Highway roads and stuff, and then they re-ground them or something to make it more like a gravel. And I wonder if there's a chance that there is someplace, if the city agreed or thought it was okay, that they could actually make a parking lot right on that side so that there's enough parking for everybody to park on that side of the road and not even have to cross the road. Because what they've done with these grindings is they put them down first and then they come later in the summer and they put a, uh, oil base over the top of it and roll it. We did it, uh, I helped a little bit down at City Park. They did it on roads down there and it turns almost like blacktop. So, uh, I mean.
That would be, I. Don't have that.
Really?
It is. So, their land, don't have that. It appears.
Well, they put a park, I'm from there. Both my children play ball there, walk across that road. Times it, trying to pay money in here together. Well, uh, years ago, we put some signs up, also had a speed limit. Hey, you're going fifty, you're going twenty. Uh, it, it really did slow people down. I think this is a great idea, not going up here to the other state. And, uh, as far as the parking, I, I agree, there's not much room there. And, uh, but, yeah, I guess if one, like, they go from the baseball field, the boys all go on that end of the park and the girls all go on this end, but they all have, they have, they share the concessions thing. So I don't know, you know, where would be the best spot if one or two.
Yeah, well, what they were, um, what was brought up?
Right.
And then.
What's Bill?
Uh, Bill, because Bill is.
Oh, yeah, Ada too, yeah.
And so, have, that was. To start.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they, uh, okay, yeah, you could there, there's a sidewalk. The other one is not a sidewalk.
But if they had one from both sides.
Oh, yeah.
The kids are walking from the back row to the east, have a crosswalk as well. And again, I, not from there, so I have not been there for any. I haven't been able to actually see if that been, but, um, I'm just. But people have told me and, and asking, so. I'm also probably going to include the uptown project.
Little league parking, you park at your own risk, there's a really big chance of getting a bad one.
And that's why, um, also that a lot of people park on across the street. This is parking lot.
Tony, let's.
So, um, that, that's why I'm here. I just wanted to present the idea and let people know what's going on and the thoughts behind that.
Thank, thank you. Um, is everybody good with Mike being on the, uh, media over there or anybody else want to be a part of this? Hi. Mr. T D, we are referring.
Well, thank you so much for.
Thank, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Alright, Mr. Order, give us an update.
Good evening, everybody. Um, first I want to note, we are trying the YouTube stream again tonight. And I don't know what the problem is, but there is some really weird feedback, so I apologize to everyone out in the public hearing that. Last week's it was a little smoother, still got some things to work out. Um, but I don't know if it is YouTube or if it's something with the AV equipment tonight. I can, I could hear Mrs. Mix when she spoke, but there's a lot of weird feedback. Uh, anyway, I got a couple of Justice Center updates for you and a couple of courthouse updates for you and I will try to be quick. Um, and I will apologize, I did not have time to get down to the site to talk to the superintendent today. So a couple of the things that I may say are underway, might be done by now, because a lot of this is rehashed from my report to the commissioners last week. Um, so, things that I can confirm have been completed over the last three weeks or so. Fireproofing is done, first floor drywall installation is done. Second floor in-wall mechanical, electrical and plumbing installation is done. Demolition of the second floor lobby to make the connection between the existing building and the courtroom vestibule, plus a couple of the small offices there is done. Tie-ins for plumbing in the booking area on the first floor are done. Interior masonry work is complete. Painting in booking is done where they had to make some, they had to repaint some things after walls were knocked out and put back in place. Building department has done an inspection on the second floor. Door frame installation on the second floor is done and appliances have been acquired. Not a lot there, but we did have some that we have to get for the new break areas, jury room. And as of last week, going into this week underway, we had continued exterior masonry work. Finished the roof, finishing the roofing, uh, second floor drywall install. Demolition of the original main entry, and I believe that is complete now, and finishing the first floor drywall. I've got meetings with the architect and an interior designer with Judge Welker and Prosecutor Gomer tomorrow afternoon. Uh, we're going to be reviewing some furniture specifics and space planning for their department's new office suites. And we are currently on target for a handoff back to the county on the seventh of June. Any question about project progress?
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
As of.
Thank you for this.
As of a week from tomorrow, when the commissioners approve claims, we will have a total remaining project balance, budget balance of two million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents. Of that, one oh five nine forty-five fifty-six is in our primary contingency fund. We have an additional twenty-six thousand thirty-nine in what I'm calling our backup contingency fund. Then we have about eleven five left for moving CASA, prosecutor's office and the circuit court to the Justice Center. We have about forty-seven seven left for IT costs not included in the construction budget. So some of the tech stuff is being done as part of that, but for anything that we might incur with rowing that isn't covered under their existing contract with the county but needs to be done. Any add-ons we need to do, you know, to accommodate in the courtroom that aren't covered, we've got about forty-seven thousand there. And we have about ninety-two seven left in our furniture fixtures and equipment budget. We have about two point one five million left between the exist, the current ton and blank line item and the roll-in line. And I do think that that roll-in light item might be a little bit cushioned. So we might have a little bit extra to put back in the contingency later on if necessary, once they've, for all intents and purposes, completed design work, which is pretty close to being ready.
Going back up to the IT.
Yes.
Is that IT going to be clean IT or are we still going to have bundles of crap?
What do you, where are you referring to when you're talking about bundles of crap?
Wires and everything kind of all bundled up and.
Since we are doing the telecom and data cable running as part of the construction project, it will be much neater and tidier than it is where we have installed and upgraded telecom after the fact in an existing building.
Removing all of the old crap.
I can't say that for certain in exist, well, the only place where there would be old crap is the old prosecutor's office and everything has been gutted from there. So, everything going, everything the prosecutor's office and the court has will be new installed.
Alright, thank you.
Any questions on the progress or the budget?
No.
And I'll update you very quickly on the courthouse project. Um, Lumenot Roland and Ton and Blank have a few inconsistencies in their proposed calendars back and forth to work out. Uh, but we largely have a project timeline in place. Because we want to make sure that we do everything right with the fiscal and legal components of the project because there has, it's a lease, a lease rental bond and we'll have to establish a building corporation. Uh, we, we gotta take our time there because we're dealing with a historic building where both we have to pay attention to historic detail and whatever surprises we might encounter in the design process. Um, and then also just because we want to avoid any hiccups with the general election and have, you know, have accusations come down that the construction caused somebody not to be able to vote, those sorts of things. We're targeting the second week of November for construction kickoff. So we'll plenty of time to get every possible detail we can try to foresee ironed out. Um, find the best, most cost-effective temporary relocation spot or spots for offices in the courthouse who will have to move. We are allowing ourselves more time on the front end than we did on the Justice Center to make sure that these bigger hoops are a little bit easier for, or smaller hoops, I guess, in terms of fitting in are a little bit easier to get through. Um, I've got our architect, I think you all know this by now, but in case any of you don't or have forgotten, Peter Kim, who had been the lead architect, left Roland late December. Uh, Matt Ierton is the current, the new project architect. He is from Lumenot out of Cincinnati, the firm that merged with Roland. He has almost completed a couple of alternative sets of proposed program drawings for the new courthouse. Um, in terms of where primary entrances will be, where exit only will be, who will go in which spaces, how we'll break certain spaces up or realign spaces where we don't have, uh, load-bearing walls, that sort of thing. Uh, I'm going to see sneak peek unofficial copies of those tomorrow so that I can kind of prepare for when they are finished and Eric Roland has given his blessing to them. But hoping by the end of this week or early next week, a little bit later than initially thought, that I will have official proposals to pass out to elected officials, affected department heads, steering committee members. They can start digesting them and then once everyone's had a week or two to review them, make up their list of questions they have, I will call a steering committee meeting to order. Um, and then for our meetings with the prosecutor and the judge tomorrow, Matt, the designer and I are going to take a walk through the courthouse just because Matt doesn't know the building yet as well as Peter did, wants to make sure that his 2D plans kind of mesh with what he witnesses firsthand 3D. Unless you have any questions, that's my report.
Any question for, for order?
Somebody from the Historical Society on the steering committee?
Yes, Kathy's going to be joining us.
Great, excellent. When's the meeting?
They're, they're not regularly scheduled. Right now, they're as needed. Once we get.
That's fine.
A little more, I'll probably try to keep them regular so we can keep, uh, keep the architect on task.
Alright, no further questions for Mr. Order. Thank you. Any financial reports, fund balances, budget reviews that need to be discussed?
I am not going to get the fund balances, I don't have them.
Uh, there is a hospital meeting, uh, March thirty-first and there's a governor's public health commission meeting, March twenty-fifth. I don't know if anybody is available or wants to attend the meeting, but if somebody from the council would like to attend them meetings as a representative.
What time are they?
The hospital meeting is eight thirty to ten thirty at the, at Celebration Station, the former, uh, Purple, the Purple Opera Hospital. And that is their every three years community health conference.
And.
Assuming eight thirty in the morning.
I mean, for people like you, Rudy, not time for your coffee break after you've been putting in the hours.
And they particularly want our input because of course, anything that we talk about might be publicly thunder.
So that meeting.
The David Hopper meeting, the one on March, Friday, March twenty-fifth. Uh, they're going to be talking, it doesn't say this in the email, but what they told us in our legislative committee meeting is that when they do their listening tours, they're going to start talking about regionalizing the health department. Which means that we would no longer have the health department here in Platte County if they're regionalized. They want to hear what we have to say about this, but they aren't telling us what we're going to talk about.
Somebody like to.
I'll go. What time's that meeting?
This is Friday, March twenty-fifth at the Calumet College of St. Joseph.
St. Joe College?
Yeah, in Whiting.
Whiting.
What?
Yep.
I want to go to St. Joe in Rensselaer.
Um, I wonder if they're going to have one in Rensselaer. This is the one that was announced to us was, uh, Whiting. Uh, why make it easy to talk to us about changing our county.
All the way up in Whiting.
Yeah.
What time?
Uh, it's at, um, one PM Central Time on Friday, March twenty-fifth. Want me to forward this email to you?
Alright, any further discussion on the meetings? We have, uh, Brian Young going to the hospital meeting on March thirty-first and Rudy Sabatini in the governor's public health. Yeah. Yeah, uh, there is, there was no, no transfers, additionals, the advertised or additional have been advertised. This meeting, we do have the Bennetts, everybody should have sent a copy of them that was sent out, uh, proven sign. We are January first or January tenth, two thousand twenty-two and our February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting, regular meeting Bennetts. Everybody had a chance to see them and review them?
They all in black and white?
Uh, there's some, some of it on here, yes, it's in, in red.
Why is it?
Yeah. Answer. I will, if everybody's satisfied with them, I'll entertain a motion to approve the whole sets of Bennetts as presented.
Well, it seems like they, I, I read the January schedules very thorough. I, I had a, right. It's like the, give the comment.
Say that you'd like to see the public comment?
No, I'm just saying, I. No, I'm just saying, I've never seen that in the minutes.
Oh, never seen the minutes of the, the public comment?
I've never seen minutes with public comments. Who did it, hey?
Yeah. Yeah, it was for the public hearing.
No, um. Okay, does it say that it'll? If no one else is going to make a motion to approve, I'll make a motion to approve. Those are comments during the public hearing, that's fine. I don't think practice. It was for a public hearing, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'd agree with your public hearing.
I've just never seen it before. Wow, does that work, Nathan?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second. Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the meetings as, the meeting, uh, Bennetts as presented. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We have board appointments. I'll do this one, then I'll let, uh, discussion goes. There was a board appointment for the public library, board member, uh, for Monterey. Council appointment, Nicole Rodriguez for the Monterey Tepidacu Library.
Is that for this meeting today?
Yes.
Okay. Has she, has she been on the board?
I would say. Yes. Yeah, same, same as the other, others usually, the libraries always recommend somebody to appoint. So I'll.
What's her name again?
Nicole Rodriguez.
Nicole Rodriguez.
You know Nicole? No, I just, listen, oh, what'd he say, maybe you knew. I'm, I do not.
So I'll entertain a motion if there's no further discussion to approve Cole Rodriguez for the, uh. Yeah.
I'll make a motion that, under the library board's recommendation to approve as presented.
Right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those that approve say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass it.
Is that the only board appointment? I think we, we haven't appointed yet for, um, plan commission, have we? A year? Or is that a multi-year term? Is that a multi-year term, Mike?
Yes.
So you're.
Two, pretty sure.
Okay, so you're in the middle of a term?
I could tell you, sure.
Okay.
Too many boards, Kathy.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll find out, I have a meeting Wednesday and I'll find out from Carla.
Okay. Because we really should be, I mean, even if we appoint the same person over and over and over, we still need to do it.
Yeah, if their, if their appointment comes up.
Right.
We need to work on getting a, a date of birth.
Kathy, Ken, honestly, statutorily, I don't think there are set terms for the, uh, elected official seats on the plan commission. I think it's basically you make that appointment until either you rescind it or the person steps down, or you just decide you want to reappoint on a cycle, a set cycle. I think in the Indiana code, the only ones that have set terms are the commissioners, citizen appointments, council appointee, the commissioner, the seated commissioner, and then like the surveyor and the extension. I think those are just as long as they're held or you want them there.
Well, it's, you can clarify that.
Yes. Thank you.
Alright, there's no further discussion on board appointments. We have the handbook policy that everybody should have seen that was handed out. That is just to establish what are, uh.
It's, it's for mileage and, um, uh, reimbursement for travel.
Yeah.
What is our current policy, Laura? What this has changed? Okay. Right. I, and, and that, that makes perfect sense, it, it does. I can't believe that we hadn't done that before.
I'm sorry, I got a little confused because I had one put in front of me, but it was a different handbook policy, that's why I'm reading it going, wait a minute.
Is, is this the one that we, we are looking at, this one, right?
Yes, yes, that's the one we're looking at, is the one for
Okay.
the field rates.
Okay. Alright, it, it makes perfect sense that we should follow the state because we don't have to look at it every year and, and find out what the state is doing.
Absolutely true.
I make that motion that we approve this ordinance?
Alright, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, the handbook policy as presented for, uh, pay of mileage and, and meals. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass it. Um, then we have the, our challenge to, uh, to solve discussions. I know, uh, that we broke up into our, into our groups. I don't know if anybody's had any time to set up meetings and stuff. I know this last, uh, month has been a little off kilter for a lot of folks and stuff, so, uh, just want to make a, a note that the groups probably need to start, you know, figure out how to get the group together and start making some plans. So at our next meeting, have some feedback.
Okay. So, I'm assuming that I'm on your committee? I believe I'm on your committee. Uh, I would like to propose that you be the person to set the meeting and give out the public notice and let us know when it is, and I will happily attend if you do those things.
Yes, so I, it's been, it's been a tough month, I know it's not.
Tough month for me too, so I, I was in no rush to get to it.
Right, we will, we will get this rolling forward.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know who's doing the other committee, who's.
Brian.
I'll make the same suggestion.
Brian, myself, and Rudy.
Your vice president.
Yeah, absolutely, I will, yep.
And advertise it.
Advertise it?
It's a public meeting. It needs to be posted. It doesn't need to be advertised in the paper so much, it needs to be posted, there needs to be what, 48-hour notice? 48-hour notice, it needs to be posted.
I'm not having a public. Maybe we can just steal my phone, Adam. I'm not having a quorum or public, we were, we're gonna talk to liaisons and talk to other departments, or, you know.
Okay. Well, when Ken's group gets together, it's four people, so.
Yeah.
Darn our luck.
Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah. You, you won't have a forum or, well, you guys.
Ken, it doesn't matter if they have a forum or not. If they are a committee and they meet, they are bound by older government. Regardless of any committee, for them then, two is their forum.
Well, if they're, if they're meeting together, if they're meeting in one central spot, meeting together as a group. But if each one's going out individually and talking to different departments, then that's not, that's not a meeting.
But then if like Adam calls Mike and Mike calls Brian and Mike, Brian calls Adam, that's, you know what?
You're making this harder and harder, Nathan.
We can have it before or after our meeting.
Okay.
It's on the right side of the public councilor.
That would be.
Thank you.
That, that's my suggestion. We need before or after.
Okay. Okay. I will help get that set up and properly advertised, hold that.
I got a question about the Whiting thing. If they do away with the health department, does Palos County, does that fund a health department if it's not in this county?
I would say somehow or other we would help fund it, I would imagine that would happen, but I, I have no idea. I mean, I guess that's why, why going to the meeting and getting some information and stuff would be important, so we can understand what the plan is, because.
And, and maybe you ask that question and they say we aren't gonna do that, but let me tell you, that's what they've been talking about. And if they are funding it, we're gonna have to pay and we aren't gonna have any control over what it is we pay. Would be my guess.
Well, we would have to pay.
Well, they're gonna have a regional budget and they'll tell Palos County how much we owe.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that's more why we need somebody there is to find out what's going on and ask them kind of question, because we don't know. What can you do?
You get paid, uh.
You get mileage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One hundred and two.
Twenty six, like it's E2, yeah. It's thirty five.
Is it thirty five now?
Uh, you can have that discussion, find your answers out later, you know, the public probably doesn't want to know that your number one thing is like you pay mileage.
Fifty eight.
And I can pay the food.
I think it's fifty eight.
So anyhow, uh, moving forward, uh, uh, our next thing is public comment and board, uh, reports, is there anything that the board has to report? Any comments, discussion?
I'd like to know what's going on with the loan that was, uh.
Two hundred thousand.
Yes, yes.
So, he has failed to meet the repayment expectations and the county attorney and I are working on it, I'm kind of at Kevin's, kind of, my, what, how we proceed is kind of at Kevin's schedule. But we are looking at whether we will have to force foreclosure or if we get it appraised and find that the value is there, we can just accept the deed in lieu of and avoid the additional legal wranglings and time involved in the foreclosure. I have spoken to Mr. Voronov and he has finally admitted to himself and to me that there's no making that project move forward. Um, his wife is more than eager to unload the property and I do have a potential buyer waiting depending on whether he is, we're able to work with him and he's able to sell it for enough that he can pay us and we never have to get in the middle of it, or whether we take possession and then put it up for auction or have a realtor market it for us. So really, it's just waiting for Kevin to have time for me and him to go over a few things and maybe to get on the property, get an appraiser out there. But we are moving forward with reposessing one way or another.
I was a little confused on how he was able to sell off.
Because the commissioners.
The pressures of that and never pay anything back on his loan.
Because he did pay back on his loan. He paid twenty grand on his loan.
He what?
He paid about twenty thousand back on his loan when he sold that.
Because I'm gonna sell twelve feet of person up my bass leg and I have to put some of that money on all night.
He put all twenty of it. Everything after closing costs came back to the county, he didn't get a penny of it.
What, what's the, the final tally that he still owes the county?
It depends on exactly how stringently we account all the accrued interest from missed payments, but some are between one eighty and two thousand, two hundred thousand. So if somebody, you know, somebody who wants to buy a blow molder, the guy I know who's interested in the property wants no interest in the machine, so let me know.
I can't understand it.
A blow molder? You know anybody who wants to buy a blow molder, let me know.
Uh, molder. We, we can have a conversation outside the company I work for.
Yeah, that guy, that's, I, I don't agree with that. That's a.
Oh, I know.
Don't believe. It's legal, well, nobody's.
And the prospective buyer that you talked about, he would have his own finances.
I hope so, because I don't want to do a third loan on that property, it's just, it's got bad juju.
I, I thought as of right now, we are not doing any more.
No, we're not, that's, the program is still on hiatus.
The county is quote out, or CDC's quote out of that business.
Well, we're not out of the business, we still have the fund. We just, uh, it's on hiatus until some.
Right, that's why I say, yo, yeah, I'm not saying we're out of money, but I'm.
Yeah, so we're not doing any right now and I don't think the guy who wants to buy it has sort of, I could be wrong, I don't know what he wants to do with it, but I don't think there are anything that would justify a county loan when the loans program is meant towards job creation.
What's going on with the, um, uh, that county home there on that property that they were supposed to be getting appraisals and, uh, I haven't heard anything about that. Gentlemen waiting to buy it.
You would have to talk to the commissioners on that one.
Nobody's telling me nothing.
You'd have to talk to the commissioners.
The, the last conversation that I had on that was, there was discussion because they thought that, um, it could possibly, the commissioners were questioning whether we wanted to do it through a, through an auction, because we had requested doing an auction.
But they said they were wanting to.
We, we are, and that's, that's what I told them, they, the, the idea was that there was a realtor that said they could handle getting rid of the property. And the discussion was that the wishes of the council was to do it by auction. And, you know, I can't as president, you know, go beyond the wishes of the council. So my comment was that if they wanted something different or thought there was a different idea, come in front of the council and propose that, that scenario. So, uh, I would say possibly at our joint session, that would.
I don't, I thought the procedure, what I remembered was it was the appraisal.
The appraisal was done.
An auction.
There was appraisal done?
Yes, appraisal was done, it's like forty-five thousand, I believe, is what the appraisal come back at.
And that was just for the land, not the building?
That's the building.
Building, land.
The whole.
The way I understand it, there's some legal. Supposedly to react on buildings.
Uh, I don't.
Ninety-nine year lease, okay. Oh, okay.
That's, first, first I've heard of that one, that one hasn't been brought to mind.
So, excuse me. React thinks they have a ninety-nine year lease, but we have not found the paperwork, that's what you're saying?
Or they have.
So would it not have to be recorded in one of our offices?
Yeah. Some, yeah. I was tracking that back where that's gonna go to. But all, all I can say is I know there wasn't appraisal done, appraisal came back, I, like I said, I'm very positive, forty-five thousand on the appraisal. And groups that did the appraising said that they thought they could peddle the property and that was something that was, I should ask whether we can do.
They said they could what the property?
Peddle the property, or the.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah, the, through the realtor, the realtor could, and I said at this point in time, it couldn't be sold through a realtor because motion of the council was for it to be done by auction. So, if they wanted to go that route, it would have to come back in front of the council and they could have that discussion with us if they felt there was a better way. But at this point in time, it's to be done by auction. So the appraisal was done, they're working on the auction. Any other comments from the council discussion?
I got the lights in the Suster's office. They really are happy with me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Right, no further board comments? Anything from the public? Public comment? All right, our next, the next commissioners meeting is Monday, uh, the 21st at eight thirty AM. The next council meeting is, uh, Monday, April 4th. Or, yeah, Monday, April, the 11th, 2020 at seven PM. And the next joint session meeting is April 11th, 2022 at six PM. With that, we'll adjourn our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.